Good evening, I will call the meeting to order at this time. If you will please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This time I will ask Councilman Scott if he will lead us into invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to come together as a community of people that serve you, Father. We pray that you'll help us make the proper decisions that benefit all those that live in part of this community. Father, we pray that you'll be with those that are sick and ill, Father, to bless them in a special way. Father, we ask all this in your name.
Allegiance in the United States of America. The Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. I am not aware of any known changes, but do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I would ask that we have time to add a closed session to discuss potential litigation with the town attorney. And I have the statute here, it's 143-318.113.
Session, discuss potential litigation. Any other changes at this time to the agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as question?
My move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session to discuss litigation, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, so our first item this evening is administering a vote of office to one of our new police officers, Dante Scarborough. Dante, if you will, please come forward, ask the chief, and anyone else who would like to come with you, please come forward.
We want Chief to tell me.
We'll do here, and then if Mickey wants to get a picture, it might be better, it's late, that's alright. Who do you have meeting here tonight?
This is my girlfriend, Delana.
Alright, well, welcome. Sophia? You gonna bear with us, Sophia? Alright, we'll make this short, right? Short and sweet. Alright, if you will, please raise your hand. I, Dante, Ashawn Scarborough.
I, Dante.
He undersigned.
Signed.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the constitutional powers.
Constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor.
That I will endeavor.
To support.
Support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said.
The Constitution of said.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent.
Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the United.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And vigilant. To enforce the criminal laws.
To enforce the criminal laws.
Of the state. That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner. On account of personal bias.
Personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties.
Execute.
My office. As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
Judgment.
That helps me. That helps me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Alright.
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 ...accomplished in school's history. And whereas the News Charter varsity volleyball team ended their impressive season with an amazing record of twenty-six and three, and two of those losses were preseason to a three A school. Final loss was in the state tournament. And whereas this has been an exciting, hard fought, and successful season for the News Charter varsity volleyball team, and whereas the town of Smithfield is proud of the record that News Charter School volleyball team has earned, and the fine publicity they have brought to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore, I Andy Moore, the mayor of the town of Smithfield, along with the members of the town council congratulates News Charter School and its volley- and its volleyball team, its head coaches, its athletic department, and all people associated, including the parents, with the volleyball team for the outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations ladies.
And I think we have one senior on the team who's actually correct, Sydney. So, coaches, if you don't mind, I will present this to Sydney.
We can do this. If we want to do it, we can get a top and bottom, you presenting it to her, and we'll get everybody.
So, let's have a little time. Um. Can you? So, we're going to, that way we can see your.
We celebrate the stages.
Bring that. So, as you leave, um.
I have enough for everybody.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna present you with the town council again.
Congratulations.
Maybe y'all play in Chapel Hill next year, y'all win.
You're certainly welcome. Thank y'all. And as you guys leave, there's a box out through your front next to Rex. You would like to pick up one of these bags.
We expect to see you next year.
Thank y'all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great year.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, I know. Don't even say it.
I knew I was. Sorry. Okay, gentlemen, we'll move on to our, our next item. It's a public hearing. Uh, CA twenty-two dash zero one. All right. Ready, Stephen?
Sure.
All right. But this is not a quasi judicial hearing, therefore no one needs to be sworn in. Um, it's public hearing CA dash twenty-two dash zero one, the town plan amendment. The town of Smithfield is requesting an amendment to update the transportation and growth management plan in response to rapid growth in West Smithfield area. Stephen, I'll turn it over to you, but do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Uh. Thank you. Um, just, just for everybody's knowledge, the town plan is something we called this plan when it was first initiated. It's really the comprehensive growth management plan and a transportation plan combined. We have put the two together in a planning process, and we're actually amending both tonight if, if approved. So, the current plan was approved in February fourth, twenty twenty. Comprehensive plans are typically updated every five to ten years. Ten years usually the latest. Our last one was over twenty years before we updated it, but planning practice is usually around ten years because things change over time. Well, we've had unprecedented growth, as the mayor said. Uh, we've got the Amazon, um, under construction of West Smithfield. We've got a lot of residential growth in West Smithfield, and, um, it has rendered a portion of our plan somewhat out of date. Um, I think we need to update the plan to, to, uh, address the changes that are occurring.
Sorry, Stephen.
All right. So, this is the, uh, plan that was adopted, the West Smithfield portion of it that we're looking at changing. And, um, what we had done is, is guided a large portion of this area for industrial growth, and that we're not changing that. We're actually looking at expanding that a little bit. Um, the transportation network, um, as proposed in this plan doesn't quite work. There are the dashed lines on the plan. Um, if you look closely, one of the north-south proposed transportation routes is supposed to intersect with Durwood Stevenson Parkway, and DOT will not allow any connections onto Durwood Stevenson Parkway. So, that alone, um, doesn't work on this plan. And where the Amazon has developed, you can see in this plan, this plan is, um, tipped to some degree, it's been on the slide. But, um, they're proposing a future industrial road. Right now, that is shown as a cul-de-sac. The landmass in West Smithfield between M. Durwood Stevenson Parkway, uh, Seventy Business, and Barbara Road is actually a pretty big landmass with a lot of developable land, and staff believes there's a need for a continuous road, not a dead-end cul-de-sac, but something that goes across that whole, um, development, providing connectivity to, uh, future development. So, that is really the nature of the plan, and then the expanded industrial shown here in the, the, you can see it's like a stippled purple and yellow. That is where we're proposing additional land to be guided for industrial development in the future. So, what I mean by guided is this is the plan for the town of Smithfield's land use. We would like, and our vision is to have that be in industrial development in the future. And so, uh, you know, developers are gonna look at this, and they're gonna make plans accordingly. Typically, rezonings then will follow, um, when, when and if there's interest in development, you'll see rezonings come forward. We generally review those against the comprehensive plan. We make sure that we are following our plans, and of course, in North Carolina, the council can differ from what's in our comprehensive plan, but it's the guiding document, and it's, it's something we can reflect back onto and, um, try to plan growth in a, in a organized way. So, this is our plan. You can see the change network. We're trying to connect existing roads that exist in that block of land, provide a new north, kind of north-south connector between the, uh, Amazon future, uh, industrial road all the way through to Barbara Road, connecting, uh, Feral Drive, I forget the name of that, Feral Drive, which is more or less a frontage road on M. Durwood Stevenson Parkway, and making that connection to local streets as well. So, that is the nature of, of this change, and staff is requesting the town council approve the amendments, um, to the town plan. I do want to point out that this was reviewed by the planning board. The planning board was in favor of the plan amendments, but, um, at least my, my recollection, it was a split vote. The minutes actually don't quite reflect that, and, uh, we're gonna review that with the planning board at the next meeting. Um, right now, the, the minutes are draft, um, so, but regardless, the, the planning board was in favor of the map change, but they were concerned with just notification, and we did follow statutory notification.
Thanks, Stephen. Questioners, comments from the council?
Mayor, I do have one question for Mr. Winsman. There's been several parties that reached out to me personally in regards to this change. Um, I don't have the answers provided. Did they reach to you, and were they have questions, and were the questions answered?
Um, I had questions about it, uh, only from Elaine Marshall, who's here tonight, and I've sent her my staff report and all the material, so she could disseminate it to her clients and anybody else she wanted to.
Well, as far as I have a question, the, uh, so, uh, just so I understand, the, uh, um, has, has there been, you know, with the plan, the issue we, we're talking about right with zoning, this doesn't affect any zoning at this point, correct?
Not at this point, no.
Right, so my question is, though, even the area that you had designated over there, and that you would like to see developed as part of the plan in the future, because we believe based upon discussions and everything, that, that there appears that that would make logical sense to extend, uh, the industrial park out that way, that's, that's what the planning board, I mean, the planning department felt, correct?
Um, correct, and if I might add, um, I'm part of a economic development work group in the, in the town, including our consultant Rocky Lane and, uh, Chris Johnson, and they're all supportive of this amendment as well. It's been discussed in our, our group.
Okay, so is that, is that really the, the, really, so the only really change to this plan is really that particular spot that, that is projected for, uh, a recommendation that would go in that area, because it's not that says it would per se, other things have to be done to your point. So, and then the, the recommendation for where you would put a road.
Correct.
Correct. There's no, there, but, but my question is, is there, has there been, when we had the other, before we had this amendment, from twenty twenty, twenty twenty until now, has there been rezoning done that differed from our plan?
Uh, we had, uh, rezoning to industrial on the, I guess it would be the, uh, west side of Seventy that was not in the plan. It was presented to the council, and the council adopted that rezoning, which is basically creating a change in the comprehensive plan with that vote. So, we did have one, but everything in that block of land we're looking at so far has followed the plan.
Okay, well, my, my point on that one was, there's nothing that hinders people from this plan being implemented to not have land rezoned if they have a purpose for it, in the case we had across Seventy, and, you know, that was done for that purpose.
Yeah, it comes down that way.
I guess my, my question is related to, this is a guiding, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a guiding document to help us with future growth based upon the information that we have as a whole, as a town, what we think, but we don't have a crystal ball, right? I mean, so therefore, it's not, it's not, I realize that I talked to, uh, I talked to town manager a little bit, and I understand that, that there is somewhat where we're willing to try our best to look towards these things, that's what we think is right, but there's no, it's not necessarily that we cannot change it.
Like we're changing.
But it's not, it's not put in concrete. So, one of these landowners here got a, like, we have an area over here, and, uh, where, where, uh, Stevenson Road, in terms of where the, the, that road comes down to Feral Drive, if for some reason, a, uh, big, you know, um, half a million dollar housing project decided to wanna build something in there, there's nothing hinders us from rezoning to make it happen.
The council has the ability to make those changes.
Right, so I'm saying, there's nothing that hinders us from doing that. If that's, I'm just saying, if something like that came up, same is true with something else. We've done that with, uh, with residential property and changed it to industrial, changed it to business because there was a, the demand, correct?
Right, there's a compelling, a compelling project or a compelling need that wasn't foreseen at the time the plan was developed. The council has that flexibility. It's, in North Carolina, comprehensive plans are guiding documents only, they don't have to be followed by law.
Okay, so it's a guide, it's not a, it's not a, um, it's not a statute thing, you say, it's a guide.
You need, you need to have one today. Towns are required to have one, but they're not, they're not, you don't have to actually follow them. Other places, you actually have to amend the plan before you can differ from the plan. That's not the case here. You change your, change of, of zoning that doesn't follow the plan, you are changing the plan automatically with that rezoning. And the transportation plan really works, you know, you've got a line through a property, it doesn't mean that line has to go exactly there. The road doesn't have to go exact there. Really, what you're trying to do is connect the dots. You know, you want, we want something to go from, you know, the end of that cul-de-sac somewhere up to Barbara Road. If someone comes through with a, something that differs but is more compelling, the council's free to make those changes.
Right.
Stephen, I had just a couple of quick questions for you. And the two parcels that you're saying would go into the plan, uh, again, I, where are they located? I didn't see particular two they were on the map.
Sure. It's the, uh, go up to the map.
The checker ones. Okay, yeah, gotcha. Okay. All right.
Do you have a copy of the old plan for this section? I'm just curious.
Yes, I'll go back.
I don't know, did you, did you give us that in the?
I do.
You did?
It's a small, it's a small.
It's here.
So, in the old plan, we showed the, we showed the road in the old plan, didn't?
Uh, I'll show you here.
How's I'm asking, do we have the?
Because that, that was before Amazon did it, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the, I say, so there was already a road planned, well, in the plan, there was a road already.
At that time, we figured the way to break that landmass was just to go north up from Durwood Stevenson, but you can't connect to Durwood Stevenson. So, it really is not a functional plan. And then, of course, we didn't envision Amazon developing where it is, so. And there could still be future changes. I know there's been, uh, discussion about trying to create a road through some of the industrial properties in the north by landowners. You know, whether that comes to fruition, again, it could be additional road crossings through there, but we wanted to make sure there at least was one, you know, functioning, uh, road through that block.
Let me, a town road, my way, or a, uh?
Well, um, DOT, as I understand it right now, DOT has agreed to maintain it at Amazon's request, the current road that's being built. Right now, they're just building a short driveway. The rest of that road isn't coming to fruition. It will, if there's additional development, they'll plant it, and they'll have to dedicate a road. DOT on the phone, I think Tim was it, Tim Kerrigan was in, in that call, and a few others, they have agreed verbally to maintain a future road up to Barbara Road from, um, uh, from the end of that, sorry, the whole north-south road. They've agreed to maintain it in the future, if it comes to fruition. I need to get that in writing, but right now, we've got a verbal statement with several witnesses. Okay?
Stephen, I know we updated this years past, it was twenty years. Thanks, and I appreciate the fact that we are staying on top of the community as it's modifying our. Um, I know in the past, and you clarified this for me today, maybe I had. Plan is not set in stone, which means you. I recall one case in the past where there was a property that was a PUD-designated area, and it caused a little bit of issue, and then maybe six months later, we changed the plan, maybe that was in two thousand, changed it, and it was no longer in. I guess one of the concerns I have is, in that particular case, it caused some extra loopholes to jump, or jump through, for the landowner. And in this case, I just don't, other burden for any landowner. Guess is, and I have, and honestly, when I look at the agenda, pictures were kind of small, hard to read, and even tonight, I didn't realize the two parcels that were. It's just a lot to take, you know, I just kind of like to think about it and mull over a little bit, but is there a time issue on this, or I mean, other than, just asking?
Uh, we just wanna be head of development, that's all we're trying to do. Um, in that particular rezoning, I believe the old comp plan did have a PUD designation in that area, but it wasn't, it wasn't as explicit as it is in our current plan, where those PUDs are supposed to go, the mixed-use areas. Um, so, um, I can see where it would have been a surprise maybe to the landowner, based on our old plan, but really, the, uh, the mixed-use designation for that area really didn't change between plans. I think it just hadn't always been followed, or, um, you know, the plan wasn't looked to over the years.
And again, no rezoning is, is all, except for maybe that other areas that you're looking at. There's no other rezoning in this new plan projected to be rezoned in different areas, right?
There are, this does not, I mean, there's no, right now, there, there is a future rezoning being looked at, which will follow the comprehensive plan in the northern area here, but, I mean, this, this is not being driven by any rezonings or anything.
No, I'm, okay, I didn't say, I didn't say it right. What I'm saying is that this, this town plan here did not, does not reflect any rezoning at all, except the proposal for adding those two sections of property up on the north. Is that correct?
That will lead to future rezonings.
I understand, but the, the plan itself, so we just talked about the plan change, therefore, you know, cause hardship to, at this point in time.
It's not creating any rezonings.
There's no rezoning, so people's property that are zoned today for certain things will be zoned that way next year, as far as my plan is concerned.
That's right.
Except for those potentially, the recommendation is to re-change those to industrial at the top.
That's right.
That's a recommendation, it's not a requirement.
Right.
Not even, nothing's been done to make that happen.
That's right.
Nothing legally binding to this plan in any way, shape.
Council can amend it at any time. But I do wanna point out, and I know Elaine Marshall's probably thinking about this, because I shared it with her, um, our findings affect for subdivisions require compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, there is some strength in our subdivision regulations to create support for the comprehensive plan, so it can make a subdivision difficult if it differs from it. So, in that case, the council would be making, again, a, a comp plan, if they decided to support a subdivision that was not compliant with the comp plan, they would be therefore amending the comp plan or recommending a change in the comp plan without approval. Just wanna point that out.
That's basically what you just said, right? Which can be done at the same time, basically. You gotta have a plan, right? They say we have, need a plan, right? But, and we can make the changes to the plan.
So, Mayor, um, if I may, um, I'm concerned about the transparency that was here, you know, there was some, um, things about property owners being notified. Mr. Winsman just stated that if they decided they wanted, well, I'm gonna paraphrase, do a subdivision on their property, this is gonna complicate. My point is, um, I have another question, and I would say whatever. This, uh, goes up to Barbara Road, the north side of this map, and it, what determined the boundaries? Because I noticed there's a few parcels by the road that were not included. Is, is there a reason for that? Go down.
All right.
And according to the zoning map, this is currently R-ten, R-twenty, right?
That's right. R-ten. Uh, the larger parcels, R-ten. Um, and I know in the past, Amazon, or the, the developer of Amazon had looked at that parcel for industrial, and I know Chris Johnson and, and, uh, Economic Development's have been looking for what land is really good for industrial. This is a nice, flat, open piece of land. The smaller ones are closer to, uh, residential homes. They're not as likely to develop because they're smaller lots, so we just looked at these two large areas, and, and, um, they had to find a way to get that road through there, and so it'll, it'll lend more support for a contiguous road with a similar land use along it. Most of the change happens on the large lots.
No roads are gonna be built until they're probably purchased anyway.
Purchased and developed, right.
The landowner won't have anything to do with it, because they want it. Thank you.
Can we back up to the statement, ma'am? I wanna make sure I understand it. So, the, the, the statement was that, uh, my counsel Scott, my question is, he had a question, that he said that, that, that as you said, because of the plan in place, it could be a hindrance from somebody, they wanna do a subdivision that was not according to the plan. Well, let me ask this question. The changes we made today, is that any different now from the changes we made today, was there any difference yesterday? Would it have been exactly the same? This plan makes no effect on that whatsoever, whether or not we make approval of the plan, or I'll make approval of the plan, it doesn't change the position of the, the same thing could have happened yesterday as it is today, because there's no changes in the zoning, no changes in the mapping, unless you're talking about those two segments at the top, is that correct?
Yes and no. I mean, you're right, it's not really making any change. However, this being a vision document does have an effect, because it says to developers, it says to people who are interested in the town of Smithfield that there's a, you know, we're very likely to support a rezoning in that area, they're gonna be looking at that land and taking it seriously, so.
Only those two segments at the top.
Yeah, right, right.
Nothing else, if you have land already that was zoned one way, this plan makes no effect on that at all.
No, and anybody could come forward and try to rezon some additional land for industrial that's not guided for industrial, you know, to make, make the development site even bigger, but then the council's at, at, at the position of really saying, well, jeez, that's not our plan.
I mean, somebody could easily parcel right across the street, right across Highway Seventy, that's residential now, that have plans for residential subdivision. That has not been built. A developer could come along tomorrow, purchase that property, want to put industrial on it, come before this council for a zoning, and get that property potentially rezoned right across the street from the purple that is there, at which time, we would probably then need to amend our, uh, um, plan at that time to show that, right? But that could happen tomorrow. Just because that has been approved, there is not one thing built on that property right across the street from the purple, and it could happen tomorrow. Somebody could walk through the door tomorrow, put down five million dollars, or whatever it is, buy the property, and then come in here and request that to be moved. That's not what our plan currently calls, right?
That's right.
Right. They probably, you know.
No, and anybody could come forward and try to rezone some additional land for industrial, that's not guided for industrial, you know, to make, make the development site even bigger, but then the council's at, at the position of really saying, well, jeez, that's not our plan.
I mean, somebody could easily parcel right across the street, right across Highway 70, that's residential now, that have plans for residential subdivision, that has not been built. A developer could come along tomorrow, purchase that property, want to put industrial on it, come before this council for a zoning, and get that property potentially rezoned right across the street from the purple that is there, at which time, we would probably then need to amend our plan at that time to show that, right? But that could happen tomorrow, just because that has been approved, there is not one thing built on that property right across the street from the purple, and it could happen tomorrow. Somebody could walk through the door tomorrow, put down $5 million, or whatever it is, buy the property, and then come in here and request that it be used. That's not what our plan currently calls for, right? Right, they probably, you know, right, staff would probably say, well, no, the plan says this, or whatever, but if you have somebody who really wants to do it, they're going to walk through the door, and they're going to say, I want to do this.
That's right.
We can either then grant it, or say no.
I guess my question is, goes back to the, to the issue of prior notification, that's really what I was referring to, because the question is, that if, if, if the landowner did not know anything at all about this map, at all, know anything that we're doing, and we did it without telling a soul, I'd say we would do that, because we met the obligations, with the, all the requirements we met, but if, if, but they knew nothing about it until after it was said and done, they're no worse off today than they were yesterday. Is that correct? That's the question. Because that could be under the law. You know what I'm saying?
Depends on how you look at it, right?
When you ask your questions, and you get answer you want, then you're going to get there in about 20 minutes.
It depends on what your vision is for your property.
Right, absolutely.
What the highest and best use is in your mind, economically, or your desire for it, I mean, there's going to be differences. It's, it's, it's a citywide planning document, the notification is like a text amendment. You don't advertise specific properties for a text amendment, because the comp plan is made up of text, and maps, and all kinds of things. So we follow the statute, we don't notify individual properties, because if, you know, you can notify the two properties being changed, but it has an impact on the property one, property away, three properties away, and it may have an impact somewhere else in the city, for tax rate, and all kinds of reasons. So, there's not a good way to notify specific properties, and say, who gets it, who doesn't. So the statutes say, treat it like a text amendment, and that's what we've done.
I do have one thing, I'm going to take part of what Council Scott said. From Council Scott's example about the residential development topic that was brought up. Dr. Barber said, what changed from yesterday and today? If those people on the top mismatched color area, today, wanted to put a residential subdivision, they would not have the burden they would have more at this time.
They are currently zoned for medium density residential, so they can proceed with the residential development by zoning, without having to ask for rezoning. The only issue they would have is at the time of subdivision, the subdivision findings of fact would say, you're not following the plan, the council disregards that, and says, they are following the plan, because we're changing the plan. That would be, that would be the act. By, by, by saying that the findings of facts are met, you are therefore changing the comp plan designation back to residential, if you support a residential development.
I was just, there was a comment made in the notes, and that's what kind of threw me about, if this happened, the likelihood of they.
But staff's, staff's findings would be that it's not consistent, it would be council that have to say, yes, it is, because we're changing it.
Because it would make it hard to be a residential development, uncompliant with the, if I own a piece of property, I want my options available, hindered by something, especially if I've had it 30, 40 years, whatever the case might be. I understand the plan is for the betterment of the town, plans change all the needed things, or landscape. With that comment being in there, it kind of struck me as.
I understand. It's, it's meant to support the land use plan, the findings of fact are meant to add strength to our comp plan, make the council and staff refer back.
Right, like I said earlier, I just don't want to direct it in that position, that direction, cost of somebody, that has happened where plans later on change, and.
And I, and, and, and I hear what you're saying, right? Property owner's standpoint, but the fact of the matter is, is that property owners are by zoning right now. And so, I've got a huge industrial site right now, that joins RA, right? And, right, and so, yes, someone could, or whatever it is, someone could, could go and build on that right now, but the fact, I mean, but you're still bound by zoning, right? I got industrial that adjoins that RA, so, I got, like, you know, so, that, that burden is there regardless, right? I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but zoning restricts what you can property in, right now, currently.
Just, I have a question. Mr. Winsman, I guess I've drawn the conclusion that the comprehensive growth plan does not align with our zoning map. This is a comprehensive growth plan, but the zoning is not going to change tonight.
Correct.
However, so if they come before us, it may say that it doesn't meet the comprehensive growth plan, but the zoning could be the same, so they wouldn't have to ask for anything.
That's right.
And I have one other question. If this was a rezoning hearing for the record, would you have notified the public?
If it was a, a rezoning? If it was a map amendment, it would be specifically, if you're rezoning a parcel, there would be notification requirements, including.
To the adjoining.
Including, yeah, adjoining property owners, and putting a sign out on the rezoning parcel.
I have one more question. When this plan was developed, how was the data, I mean, wasn't there public feedback?
There was public feedback, you know, I, I'm sure there's a lot of citizens didn't even know about the current plan we have. We do the best we can, we had several public hearings, we had surveys, we had a survey put out through a Facebook technology, that it kind of finds people who are in town with Facebook open, and sends ads to them, saying, fill out a survey. We tried a number of things to get public support, public comments, and through that process is how we got this.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to, move to recommend the town council approve proposed amendments.
Hold, hold on a minute. Yeah, hold on a second, I got to finish the public hearing still.
Sorry, my fault.
No problem. Anyone, any, any other comments? Anyone in the audience wishing this? So please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, council members, I appreciate so much the opportunity to be able to be here to address this issue. My name is Elaine Marshall, and I'm a Realtor, Marshall and Associates, and I represent clients who own two parcels of land that are in the adjacent area. Thank goodness for internet, for emailing, texting, phones, and everything else, because it's been a really busy last four days or so. The reason that I even know about this is because I get emails in notifying me about meetings, and then I check the agendas, to see if there's something that I need to be involved in. So, a few days ago was when I found out about it. So then I notified my clients, and then I've tried to gather all the information I could to help them understand, and so, and, and myself understand, and I am so appreciative to Stephen, because he's been so helpful, always has been, with these kinds of things, so we've had a lot of discussion on this. I appreciate planning department, or planning board members who have helped in some clarifications and so forth. I understand that it's important to have a plan, that is very important. However, my issue is that I think that when there's the potential for the impact that this could have with the landowners to adjacent properties, that there needs to be more time to have this information disseminated, and to, you know, get some more of their questions answered. One of the questions that I have Stephen is, on the map, what's in purple? Okay, was all of this section here originally in the industrial classification or certification?
Everything in dark purple is our current plan, it's just a stippled area in the north that's being added to it. Nothing else has changed in the comprehensive growth plan.
Okay, I, I just, I know that we were involved in the process of getting industrial certification for that major tract of land, and I did not recall that there was included at that time, you know, this portion.
It was, yeah, and you can see also, we, we extended some industrial zoning south of Durwood Stevenson Parkway at that time also.
I thought it's, like, that was just this part.
No, this is exactly how, how we approved it in 2020.
So anyway, I know that in the process of the industrial certification, that, you know, it was stressed that just because that process was done, did not dictate how the property had to be used, you know, down the road. So, but as I understand it, that certification is history now, anyway, as far as, you know, everything being up to date of what they've done, so it has to be redone by other buyers or whatever. So, anyway, I just, I, I feel like that when you have a plan that's laid out, that, you know, say maybe two or three years from now, that, you know, that that was an established plan, that some people may feel like, well, that's the, the real deal, and may feel like that there's not the flexibility that we talk about being available to people. So I just feel like that we need, like, for example, the, the landowners that are adjacent to the landowners that I represent, and these people are in four different states, so, you know, it's, it's a communication issue sometimes, but they are totally unaware of any of this, and it certainly could have a, a potential impact on them, so I just think we need more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing this? I don't see any. This time, I will entertain a motion, close the public hearing.
I move.
Motion in the second, all in favor? It was a pleasure.
To recommend the town council approve, promote, opposed amendments, this plan, growth plan, NCA dash 22 dash 01.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the amendment. Further discussion on it?
I have one question. When you're advertising certain things.
It was advertised.
It was.
Yeah, it was advertised, but you.
It was not.
Not on properties, not individual properties, didn't get noticed. Advertised in the newspaper, Joko reported it on our town website.
May I misread the man?
All right, do you want me to have a motion, duly seconded, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Three opposed? One, two, three, four, so I will vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much. And I will just like, I will say that, Elaine, I, I don't disagree with, with your comments that, that were made, and I have, some of the property owners, and maybe the property owners that you represent, I don't know if you represent them or not, but some of the property owners, all in the same family, have, have, did reach out to me personally, and I, I did speak to them, and, or, or email them, and as I stated, is that, I, I understand that, right? As a property owner, I, I probably would want to have that, you know, some notification, right? But also, I tried to explain that, since this is not a rezoning, which I think some of them thought it was a rezoning also, maybe there was some miscommunication there, that it was not a rezoning, that there was, there was no, that the town followed, I guess, the statutes and what I've understood, correct? If it was done the way that it has been told, Mr. Attorney, that the, the town followed the general statutes as far as what was needed, right? Now that doesn't mean that there could have been some communication, right? But also, this impacts, this plan impacts the entire town, so it impacts all citizens, not just specific property in one specific geographical area, which as a rezoning would potentially do, and therefore, the duty for us to reach directly out to those individual property owners, right? Since this impacts all citizens, it would be very difficult, right, for, for the town to then personally reach out to every citizen, right? And so, so with that being said, right, I, I understand the, where you're coming from, you know, as far as that, and maybe that is something that potentially, I don't know, that we, we could speak about, right? But I'd have to refer to, you know, the, the city, the city attorney also, to give us some advice on, on that as well, because I can see that as potentially opening up the door, Pandora's box, right? When it, when it comes to that, and, and we have a lot of legal matters that we have, right? So, under, so I certainly understand that. However, I don't really understand the planning board, right? The planning board has a duty to look at the facts that are in front of them, planning board has a duty to make recommendations back to us, and not vote on the fact of whether they disagree with how something was handled, when it was handled via, you know, statute, right? So, I would advise that the planning board members try to keep their personal thoughts and opinions out of things, and make recommendations that are based off of fact, and based off of what is presented, take that into consideration when they're doing votes, right? Not whether a property owner was notified, right? It is a matter of, was this legal, did this pass muster? Which, from what you've said, that was the general consensus, I don't know, I wasn't at it, didn't even know about this until I got my agenda package, right? But, the general consensus was there was no issues or disagreements, when some voted no, because of the notification, which then, I think, could then cause the general public to think that we were doing something maybe shady, if you will, for a lack of a better term, and that is not what I've heard. I have heard that we followed the, exactly, the general statute by the letter of the law, and did the proper advertising, right? So by making those comments, and some of the board members, the planning board members, it almost cast a shadow on the council, right? Or that's the way that I perceived this, by some of the comments, and by reading some of the meeting minutes from the planning board, right? And I'm not directing, I'm looking out in the audience, right, so I'm not directing this to, to anyone, right? But, but I would caution the planning board, that please try to make sure that they're sticking to the facts, and they're making the decisions, and try to leave personal opinions out of whatever decision-making process, that only then helps us make the decisions we need. I appreciate everything that the planning board does, so please don't get me wrong, I do appreciate everything that staff does, to make us so that we are prepared to make these type decisions, right? But I just, I just ask that some of the, for the personal things, that's out of.
That was why I asked the question, I did, I did notice that too, that when I said no, that it was advertised, I was.
Absolutely, right, no, I knew what you were referring to, yeah.
I did not, I can't believe that, I don't consider every statute. And I can't, but I'm thankful that you guys know that, so.
I wasn't saying that you had to do that thing, or do you have a question, do we have to do?
No, I want to make sure that we did do the right thing, right? And that's why, and I'm glad you raised that question, because I want to make sure that we did do the right thing.
Well, it wasn't done.
Because if we didn't, there'd be a different conversation up here tonight, right?
And I can't say I know all the statutes that are done, so.
And that one's going to build a road until all the portions are there.
It's a moving document, I mean, it could change. It just depends on how to go. We got to put it behind us.
I would think though, that I would like to see the staff try to identify, I realize we met the letter of the law, but clearly let, see if there's some other avenues we could possibly do to get the words out to everybody. Not that, I mean, I think we've made an effort, but just my question is, is there a way to look to see if there's some additional things we might be able to do to make that better? I'm not saying that it was, but obviously everybody did not know about it. So there may, is there something we can do different? We did do diligence, but I'm just asking, maybe take another look to see if there's something else we might be able to do, you know, in the future to help get the word out a little better, not, yeah. I think we did what we had to do, but. No, no, but I'm saying this.
But I'm saying you got to follow what the state is telling you.
We've been with the media and stuff like that, I'm saying is there's some other media channels that we can do? No, you're right. I'm saying there's other avenues. No, what we did was right, but is there some other communication tools we could use to get the word out?
I understand.
And that's all I'm saying.
Other avenues.
That's right, so that, that, that people would hear it a little better, chance that they can hear it.
Absolutely, and that's, that's exactly what, I mean, I copied you guys on the email, right? That's exactly what I said to the property owners, is that we would look.
Right, and that's what I want to make sure. I want to make sure we got that out there, but that's what we do need to do, trying to make that a better way of getting people so that they are aware of the issues.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, gentlemen. I've actually got to do some work tonight. All right, we'll move on now to our next public hearing. Again, this is not a quasi judicial hearing either, therefore, no need for anyone to be sworn in on this one. It's ZA dash twenty-one dash zero-eight, Regulations for Signs. Town of Smithfield is requesting amendment to Article ten, Part three, Regulations for Signs that will allow additional wall-mounted sign opportunities for commercial properties, creates residential subdivision sign requirements and modifies existing text to clarify and eliminate inconsistencies throughout this document. Have a motion to open the public hearing.
May I motion up low, Gary?
Motion in a second, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The intitis for this ordinance change was to add additional wall signs for commercial businesses. And we got into it, we found some other issues, inconsistencies in the code, found some other opportunities for improvements and the planning board had some previous recommendations for subdivision signs that we've included. So I'm going to go through those changes without going line for line. You've got the line for line changes in front of you. I'm going to hit the highlights and please ask questions. So it makes the following changes, updating permit requirements, including eliminating late fee provisions. As long as I've been here, we've never charged a late fee. So if someone puts up a sign illegally, we work with them to come into conformance. We say, please submit for a sign permit. If they don't, we pursue zoning code enforcement. Charging double fees like it used to do doesn't make sense. We just want everyone to get a permit for the signs. So, change that. We consolidated regulations for signs into distinct sections. Pole sign area calculations have been moved from section ten point two, one point one, to the computation of sign area section. So we had little bits of how you measure a sign over here and a little bit over here, we wanted it all in one place. Just the way, I think it was tagged on later and didn't get consolidated. Just updated the ground mounted sign dimensional requirements so they can be found. There's always confusion, it's clearer now. Update standards for all permitted signs. Just there were just wording that was confusing. Locations of regulations, not where they really belong, not logical. Eliminated contradicting or differing regulations for the same sign, we found some of that in the code. Good thing nobody really understands the code, so they can't find those inconsistencies. I think we got it all. We updated and clarified temporary sign regulations and created a separate section for temporary signs. They were kind of scattered throughout the code, whereas when people use it, they want to know about temporary signs, we got a section just for temporary signs.
Is that for a sign, like for a new business or something like that?
Yeah, they want to put up a new business or sale, sale today.
So it tells you how long it can be up and what?
It was confusing how it was written. We had sign regulations in the entry corridor overlay district regulations in Article ten. So if you were just looking for sign regulations, you wouldn't think to go there. Just because you're in that overlay district, you're just thinking, I want to put a sign on my business, not realizing you're in the overlay districts, you wouldn't even know they were there. It references the overlay district, but the regulations are in the sign code. So there's cross-referencing between the two, so that's a big improvement. This is something the planning department recommended. They want to mandate residential development signs in each residential development. Currently, it's a choice. If you do a residential sign, you know, East River, if you do one, these are the regulations you need to follow. The planning board says we want to have, mandate them, and so that is drafted into the code. You are required, if you're a residential developer, to have a entry sign at the entrance to your development. The staff is recommending an increase from sixteen square foot of sign area to twenty-four square foot of sign area. There have been some complaints in the past. It's a pretty small sign area. We think with some of the larger corridors, we're seeing these signs on, it does make sense to have them be a little larger. If you're going to have a sign, you might as well see it. So we're allowing, this was the main, the focus, allowing wall signs on walls fronting on streets, public parking areas, common parking areas in a planned shopping center or allowing a public access walkway at the rate of one square foot, foot per linear foot of frontage or five percent of the wall. Right now, your primary sign is at that dimension, but your secondary sign is at half of that. You can have, you know, one square foot per, per linear wall, linear foot of wall on, on one frontage. You've got another frontage. Let's say it's the same, same building frontage, that sign can only be half as much. But then the very next property, who doesn't have a double frontage, their sign now gets to be bigger. To me, that makes inconsistency in, in a street, how you have signs. You might as well have them all be consistent size, you know, proportional to the wall as you go down the road, rather than just artificially saying the second sign has to be smaller. And then we're allowing the possibility of having signs on the parking lot side. As you recall, we had a variance for scooters not long ago, where we allowed the sign to be on the parking lot side, rather than on the street side, at their request. And currently, they're requesting a small sign on the skinny side facing the street, which would be a third wall sign. This code would allow that third sign, but would allow the parking lot sign without a variance in the future. So it's more flexible. I think this goes back to what we had years ago in the code, like before two thousand eight. It's not actually reinvent, it's not inventing something new, it's going back to something we had a long time ago. And as the mayor had pointed out, Pizza Hut has a sign that doesn't meet our current code that he was asking about, and it beats this standard. It's probably developed way back when. We add the high-rise signs to our commercial sign tables. And we have a table that kind of summarizes all the heights and everything. That particular sign type was not added to that table when it was added to the code. Confusion again, because you don't know where those standards are found. We had a bunch of coordinates to the bottom of that table that were hard to read, hard to find, and often got overlooked if you were trying to read the sign code. We've just incorporated them into the regulations, so they don't have to be footnotes. So we got rid of the footnotes. We updated the pole sign regulations to be in conformance with the DOT standards for, it's billboards, billboard signs. And then in general, we reorganized the whole sign code, I believe, to be more logical in its order. Like I said, bringing temporary signs all into one section called temporary signs, the way you would look for it. And we think we've made that improvement. And we consolidated all the sign lighting regulations into one area in the code for sign lighting, where it was kind of scattered. So those are the highlights. If you have any questions, staff is finding this text amendment best proposed, consistent with the comprehensive growth plan and other adopted plans, and that it's reasonable in the public interest. And I have a recommendation here for the town council.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Stephen? Anyone in the audience? Not seeing anyone. There are no questions from the council while we entertain the closing. Motion in a second, all in favor? Opposed? Of the council?
Motion?
Motion.
I move to approve zoning text amendment ZA twenty-eight, adding the amendment.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Opposed? Hey, Stephen? Hopefully, these amendments will make that section maybe a lot easier to read. All right, at this time, we will come to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak here in citizens' comments, please come forward at this time. Oh, okay. All right, all right.
He is a citizen.
Not seeing anybody. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm thinking motion approved, the consent agenda?
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And we'll move on to business item number one, which is on page one oh five, I believe, in your packet. It's Economic Development Administration Grant Update and Request for Matching Funds. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page one oh five, one oh six of your agenda, you have information on the EDA grant application, which was previously approved by the council. This is the third time that this has been in front of the council. It was the first time it came in front of you requesting a seventy-five percent match to the three-point-eight million dollar grant application, and that was approved. And that money was going to come from the water and sewer fund balance as it was left over from the Derwin Stevenson Waterline, which is now being paid by a grant from the county. Later on, we came back to you and asked to increase the match amount to a twenty-five percent match. And you approved that as well. We submitted our application with twenty-five percent match amount. It has been reviewed by the federal government and they have come back and said, we hope to be able to provide you with this funding. We cannot tell you with a hundred percent certainty that we will. However, in order to move forward, we need you to agree to what would be closer to a twenty-nine percent match, which would be one million ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars of the just under three-point-eight million dollar grant. And this is for the sewer line that is up on the screen now in West Street. We've been through three, this is the third time. At this point, we are now moved to the due diligence period of this grant, which means all they're doing is checking all the boxes. They're asking us to turn in certain policies and, and banking information so that they can deposit money directly into our account, those type of things. While they can't tell us that we're awarded this grant because of the due diligence stuff, they will tell us that about ninety-five percent of the grants that reach this point are funded. So we're in a short road of this. But one of the things that we have to provide them with is that we will provide them with this match amount and that we do have this match amount set aside somewhere in our budget or in some type of a separate fund in order to match the EDA amount. So tonight, that is the question in the ask of the council, is one, do you want to pay the extra four percent match in order to get the total three point, almost eight million dollars for this sewer line funding? And two, if you do, where do you want that money to come from? It can come from fund balance, like the twenty-five percent match had already come from the water and sewer fund balance. There is that money there. It can come from your American Rescue Plan Act funds, your ARPA money, if you also vote to use that ARP money as revenue replacement. Okay, you can't just pull it out, otherwise it has to be used for other things. But we can use it for this if you take the exemption, the allowance that the Treasury Department has provided you with a ten percent reduction in revenues since COVID. Or you can split it up. You can take part of it from ARPA funds and part of it from fund balance. What percentage that would be is up to the council. So those are basically your choices if you want to fund this project, as to where that money would come from. It makes sense to staff to just take the money from the American Rescue Plan Act, since it was originally made for infrastructure. And that's exactly what we're looking to do with it here, is build sewer line, a replacement sewer line in order to spur economic development further on the west side. That would leave your money that's in fund balance there to be used at your discretion for other water and sewer projects that might arise down the road with no time constraints or anything else, like the ARPA money had. So at that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might.
Mayor, I may ask. Mr. Scott, what is fund balance?
Numbers for what?
Water sewer fund.
What the actual fund balance is? I don't have that number with me. I, I do know that, that because the fund balance was strong, even though we were taking money out of it to do the Derwin Stevenson Waterline. So. When the county provided us a grant to do that, that money is still sitting there. So our fund balance today is stronger than it was last year because of.
Do you remember what percent that was?
About seventy-two percent, I think.
Yeah, I have a question. So the, so the sewer line here is eventually going to be utilized by new customers. Isn't that correct? Because that's the objective, put the line here so we can have more customers on that side of the road. Isn't that correct?
It is, but I believe it will also be utilized by existing customers because the line that is currently in part of this area will be abandoned and replaced with this line. Because the other line is aging, we believe there's I and I problems with it. So hopefully, it'll be a win-win in a lot of ways. It will reduce our I and I in that area as well.
So how much, well, we're just talking about the four percent difference. So how much, well, we're just talking about the four percent difference because the twenty-five percent we've already allocated, correct?
Well, we've approved it.
Uh, we've already approved where we're getting it from, is that correct?
Yes, we approved it.
Okay, so we're only looking at the four percent. How much is that?
Uh, well, let's see. The difference between one million ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and nine hundred and fifty thousand, so.
One hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. But. Let me clarify one thing you said. You said, we're only looking at four percent because we've already approved it from fund balance. When you approved it from fund balance originally, the Treasury Department wasn't allowing you to use ARPA funds for this match. So even though you said you're gonna take it from there, and you still can, no problem at all, but you do have another option now that wasn't available to you when you approved that last.
Another question. So when we originally approved the money for Durbin Stevens Road, I mean, for the pipeline. Okay. Uh, how much was that total?
Um, Ted, do you recall?
How much were we pulling from the fund? For three million. How much does this total project for this?
This is three, just three point eight.
I mean, how much our part of it would be, with the grant?
One million ninety-five thousand eight hundred and.
So less money than we had allocated already on that other project.
Yes.
Frank, remember, Ron, I thought one of the things that we had discussed before we, obviously, if I realize now we can spend other money for something like that. The, uh, I thought we had discussed that this was an easy thing for us because now that we've been given that money from the county and freed up that money, we can spend on this other project to do what we needed to do.
Yes. Okay.
I have one other question. I don't think there's a question whether or not the, what the project's for is funded. I'm concerned that you mentioned that grant funding may not come through. If we allocate these funds, does that further restrict if it comes from the fund balance?
Not sure I'm understanding.
If we put this money, I take it from our water sewer fund balance, which I think is the most logical way to do it for bookkeeping, and the project doesn't proceed because of the grant funding, are we still restricted to that money? How will that transition?
No, the money would never actually be removed from the fund balance. It would just be allocated on a piece of paper saying that this is where it is. And then we would not be able to spend that money until the grant comes through. If the grant doesn't come through, the money would remain there and it doesn't really change anything.
Recommendation to staff is use the ARPA funds for it.
That's correct.
Reason for timeline. Leave our existing fund balance and fund balance. Beyond two timelines.
That's correct.
On the other hand, the, the, um, sewer line that's coming from that contingency fund has a revenue stream, uh, that does, because it has to be, has to pay us off. We have to raise the bills, so we have to make sure that it pays ourselves. Whereas the other money can be spent for projects that have no revenue stream and therefore has to come out of our, um, um, balance, fund balance, because we don't have a way of getting, other than getting grants. Is that not correct?
Yeah, if you're referring to general fund projects specifically. Yeah, let's, let's take roads, for instance. If we wanted to use American Rescue Plan Act funds for, for roads, we can certainly do that. And then, and then, you know, pay for this out of the fund balance for, uh, the sewer, water and sewer department. Uh, it, it's really just a matter of how you all see the best use of the funds. We have a little over four million dollars allocated to us for American Rescue Plan funds. Already, we've allocated a hundred and sixty thousand of that to the Cedar Drive sewer project, so that's spent. The rest of it remains. So obviously, this million dollars is still leaving you with two million dollars of unspent funds. Almost three million in, in unspent funds in Rescue Plan.
I thought we're only talking about a hundred and fifty thousand because the other was already allocated to come from the, uh.
What he was trying to say is he'd rather use. Yeah, we, you can use the ARPA money for everything, the whole thing.
And keep the fund balance.
You, you, you don't have to. You can leave it the way you had it and just use American Rescue Plan funds for this difference. Or you can use it all out of fund balance.
Yeah, but fund balance is a lot less restrictive, so you'll use as much in there as you can.
It's less restrictive for sewer and water projects. You can't use it for building roads. I think that's what House and Barber is saying. So it's, 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 you know, like Councilman Scott said, the important thing is that hopefully we all agree that, that it's, the spending of the million dollars is worth getting the three point eight million, and this is a viable project. How you all want to allocate that money is, it's a little bit of up in the air and it doesn't matter that much. One way or the other, you're kind of just moving money around here. But, uh, American Rescue Plan money is simple and easy, and it's money that is available to you and its intended purpose.
Is for this.
Was for infrastructure. And this would certainly be a good use of it.
There's a timeline on this project as well.
Yes.
Mayor, I, I would, um, I'm a little nervous about moving the money, but I understand. I would entertain a motion to approve this additional hundred and forty-five eight thousand for the project on the water sewer fund balance.
I second that.
Gives us opportunities.
Madam Clerk, did, I was just looking at you. Do you have a question? Or did you get that?
That's correct.
All right, so we have a motion for duly submitted. Any other discussion?
I will. We had our meeting recently to discuss. There were several projects that Ted had, um, mentioned that would. Several of those projects would not be. Timeline of ARPA money. That's great, Ted. At least two that I know of. So can't meet. Just assuming we wanted to go ahead and move forward with those. Will you spend this money for balance? But balance may not be feasible.
That's correct. Then, then we're gonna have to spend the ARPA money on something different, not on the.
Because the timeline for those. I'm, because that we're past the twenty. Right, and that. Based on projects that, uh.
Sorry.
Yeah. To the council.
Most efficient way to move the money. ARPA money.
It, it's all a matter of bookkeeping. It's really irrelevant which way. I wouldn't make that a consideration of your decision.
All right, we have a motion. Second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike. All right, now we will move on to council members' comments.
I just want to make a comment to the, uh, the sanitation department. Again, when their, when their trucks are running down and they're out there working till late at night, coming in dark to get their stuff, coming in days early to try to pick up some, borrow some dump trucks so they can get the stuff and make sure they take care of you. That says a lot about the type of people we have working in our town. And I just want to make sure that, that really, our citizens, if we see them out there working, need to stop and say, hey, thank you for what you do. You know, sometimes I'm sure it's a thankless job, we appreciate it. And I always try to make an effort to go there and talk to them. So not stop, you're doing business down there.
It's a quick talk, there, Roger.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a quick, nice little talk.
You believe that, don't you, Roger?
No such thing.
No wonder my trash was late picked up this week.
No such thing.
I would agree with Councilman Barber on that. So I do appreciate what the sanitation department does as well as, it's really, all the staff, they're a happy guy. Only the other guy, I've been kind of in my age the last three months. So I've had some help issues, but things are better. So I appreciate all the patience from the town manager, the staff, the mayor, and the council. A lot of folks reached out to me, a lot of folks checked on me, and I appreciate that. And that's just, I mean, you took time every day to think about it, I mean, all the thoughts and prayers and all that, and I appreciate it.
Good to have you back, sir.
Yes, good to be back, thank you.
Anyone else?
One, one quick comment, Mayor. This is recent winter weather we've had. I was out early because I had to be. Staff out clearing streets promptly, public utilities, um, interruption. Value the, they're in-house and able to get that back. So I just want to extend it.
And Stephen from Planting Department. Right, but, uh, the, the work y'all do to keep now. Text amendment. Do people come into the town?
So yeah, I, I want to echo what a couple of the council members said, you know, during the, the recent, the recent snow events that we've had, what, three weeks in a row, right? And I think I heard possibility of some this weekend, some frozen participate.
Except, yeah.
Um, this weekend, maybe not snow, but some freezing rain possibly happened. Not sure how true that is, but we'll, we'll see. But I did, well, I did want to say to all the departments, but, um, especially to, to the guys that were out, um, clearing the streets, out doing that. Fantastic job, right? I mean, they had the streets. Good afternoon. I would say that probably almost every street. Right, and, and cleaning. So, and I, I believe that that, that, that had a positive impact on the next day, right? Enabled. Make for the citizens a positive impact. Please, please reach out to them. On behalf of myself and the entire council, whatever. What they did, the long hours, the weekend work. As Councilman Barber said, also sanitation crews, down trucks, not only the trash trucks, but also the leaf trucks, right? Those guys were out with rakes, with shovels, with everything. I saw them at seven thirty at night, one night, still working with a backhoe and everything else, trying to get the leaves, um, picked up and put up. Uh, and, and I did want to say that, um, Mike, I believe, we were, correct me if I'm wrong, able to reach out to the town of Four Oaks, this, us vacuum, is that correct?
That, that is correct. They provided us with one of their leaf trailers for a little over ten days so that we could get ahead a little bit of our leaf. Much appreciated.
So, so, uh, several years ago, um, I mean, I don't know, it was maybe three years ago, Councilman, at that time, Councilman Vic Ogren reached out to me when they were down. And we had our truck to them that day. Um, and, and they were able to utilize our truck so they didn't get so far behind. So three or four years later, now, uh, Mayor Vic Medlin, I reached out to him and said, hey, look, my, my, my first call to you is ask you a favor. And, uh, within thirty minutes, their Public Works Director called me and said, what do you need? And I put him in touch with staff and Mike, and they were able to, to help us out there as well. So hats off and thank you to a town of Four Oaks for lending, lending a hand when we need it. Also, um, today starts, I believe today is the first, right? Um, starts, um, uh, the kickoff of Black History Month. So, um, I ask everybody to remember that as we, we go through this month and what that means to us as, as a country. But our, our black community has gone through throughout the years and. That as we celebrate Black History Month. Many things going on. Um, in celebration of Black. And the last thing that I had, um, well, one, well, one more thing, or two more things. Mike, any update on the Duke or Ted, on the Duke, um, Energy outage today? I mean, did we get, did we get it back? Do we know?
It was back up and operating properly. It came back up a little before lunchtime. Transmission line somewhere, I'm not, still not sure where, between Smithfield and Kenley was damaged. Um, and they had to take time to find that and, uh, repair it.
Again, thanks to you for notifying Ted. I know, I know it wasn't our situation, but it does impact some of our citizens. And so to Brian and whomever else were responsible for, for getting those social media posts out. I saw Brian, or, or, I'm assuming it was you, Brian, I don't know. But, uh, you, you were responding pretty quickly to citizens' comments, asking, well, was this impacted? Was the courthouse impacted? Was, um, whatever, Outback Steakhouse impacted or whatever? Was the community college impacted? And I'm not sure how you knew all that, I don't know if you called or whatever. But regardless, you were providing almost real-time updates to our citizens. And, uh, not really the expectation, but, but thank you, um, if you remember it was, uh, to town staff for providing those, those updates.
Thank you very much. And then also, I just wanted to, real quick, and I, I know, John, where you're. Here, as far as a very short agenda, right? And you're, you're operating in meetings, right? But I did want to just clarify also my comments earlier regarding the, the planning, uh, the planning board and the personal comments, right? And, and what, and what I meant by that is, is that, you know, they were in consensus with it, with the notion of making the update. But then they, some, some individuals seemed based off, I haven't talked to any member of the planning board, right? But also, but I know we have the husband of a member here, um, who actually, I think, made the motion to, to move forward with those recommendations. But I just want to be, be clear that, right, is, is that based off of what staff told us, and I think was even in the writing, is that they were, they were in favor of this, but yet some of them voted elsewhere in a different way because of the notification, right? They thought it should be done some way. But that sends a mixed message to us, right? Obviously, there was even confusion with staff of no end. And then some members that were at the, um, some citizens at the planning board meeting, I think they have gotten a little confused and so forth. So when situations like that happen and you bring those personal, um, aspects into it and you vote a different way than the way that you actually say you're going to vote, you say you, you believe in it and you want it to go this way, but then you vote a different way for a totally irrelevant issue, it just sends a, a mixed message to us, and I don't think it does us really good justice, right? Because then we're sitting up here trying to. Right, so that, that, I, I, again, I thank all the planning board for everything they do. Definitely, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's all I have. Mr. Manager, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. The town is, um, starting its third phase of wayfinding signs. Last week, we completed utility locate, so you will see some additional wayfinding signage going up here in the next few weeks. Piece of good news, we received notification from Electric Cities that, uh, they're, they are not recommending any type of wholesale electric rate increase for this fiscal year. So that's good news for our citizens, um, as far as any rate increases, um, that would be mandatory based on a wholesaling. It would have to be passed. Also, very quickly, an update on our water plant project. We did a thorough review, this, uh, Vias. We did a thorough review this last week or so on where we're at with that project. Upon conclusion, we found that we're not only still within our budget, but we're also a little bit ahead of schedule of, on everything. We don't know how that's going to continue to work out with supply and delivery options and things that we're seeing in our nation, you know, countrywide. But today, we're in good shape there. Everything's going well. We're not experiencing some of the things that other areas are experiencing where the cost of the project has doubled or anything like that. We're staying within budget. A lot of that's due to Ted's good work and the people, the contractors that we've hired to assist us with engineering and having some forethought, buying some of the pipe early and some things that allowed us to store up some supplies before they became short and the prices went up. Kudos to them and good news for.
Thank you, sir. There's nothing else. We do need to go into closed session. Councilman Scott, I want to ask you to make this motion because I think you have the statute reference.
I do, Mayor. I requested.
I'm making that motion.
For us to go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A three to consult with the town attorney.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand here.